All right, we're all here. Thank you for your patience. Called meeting to order at nine oh four AM. Looks like we've got landscaping on our agendas today. So, first case. Case UV twenty twenty five sixty two, Homebase Properties Inc., care of Mike Crowley, ten fifty North, Chesterton, Indiana, four six three oh four, in Liberty Township. Zoning currently is rural residential, RR, four point two cent acres. This is an informal review allowing landscaping supply yard, mulch production operation, including outdoor storage equipment and materials that we have represented. Please come sit, state your name and address, and your request. Right here, this table, right here. And pull the microphone up too.
Thank you, Larry.
Luke, Mike Crowley.
Mike Crowley, your address, please.
Four oh five D-Drive Drive.
Okay, and what are your requests?
To get a variance to the land for the ten fifty property to allow landscape material multi-distribution recycling facility.
And what is the land used for now?
Rural residential.
So, there's just a house on the property already?
There's actually nothing on the property.
So, it's a vacant piece of property?
It's been a vacant piece of property for essentially forty plus years.
Okay. What we're gonna do, we're gonna ask each of the staff members on the board to ask what...
Yes, sir. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is...this is not the property that they've been filling on? This is that piece of property on the south side?
It is.
So, you've been filling in that property?
Yes.
Okay.
Was this a mine before, Rich?
No, it was...
Flat property.
I just went by it and was surprised because I thought there was water standing on there at one time. When he said there was nothing going on, I wanted to make sure I was looking at the right property.
There's no home or barns or any...
No, there's no structures on this property.
But you have been filling?
Yes.
And how long has that been going on?
Two months, but not daily, not consistently, just putting in parking pad.
Okay, we'll get to that. David, while we do staff asking questions, may I?
A couple preliminary questions here. Are you currently performing this operation on this site right now?
Yes.
And what...I'm sorry, the operation of... Are you currently...are you currently running the business on the property right now?
No, no, there's no business.
But you're preparing for it.
Trying to prepare for it.
Okay. How you...how are you before us today? Did the county come to you? Did a complaint come in? Did you know that you needed to apply for, you know, to apply for these variance? What's that coming?
Been working on applying for it for essentially since the beginning of the year, trying to fill out forms and having attorneys take care of things.
Okay.
Not trying to get operational until I have any variance, but trying to...if I can't do this with the property, at least be able to do something with it.
Okay.
So, I've applied for permit driveway, you know, all of that, so I have access to the property to get in and at least clean it up, make it more presentable. I'd like to work with you to trace it from the street.
And the question is, and I'm not trying to play like God, Jerry.
No, I understand.
Sometimes people are here because they were already doing something, and then by knowing how they came before us, kind of gives an indication as to, you know, is this operating a nuisance to the community or...
Right, I have...I have the equipment there, but I'm not operating any form of a business out of it, just more cleaning up the land right now, you know, trying to keep the grass on front clean, and just make it more presentable.
Okay.
So, regardless, I get told no, I can't do this, and still rather be able to functionally clean up the land and figure out what to do with it.
Sure, correct, long term. I believe I read in your notes that it said that you didn't have any permanent structures proposed as part of your long term...as your long term vision for this?
Long term, I would like to put up a barn, I believe that was put in there, but it wasn't.
Oh, I thought there was a note that said there was no buildings, that there were no buildings proposed.
In the file I have, David, it does show locations proposed, barns in the future.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I was confused by that because when I read the description of what was...what you were looking to do, I was surprised when I saw the note that it said here, "There are no permanent buildings proposed at this time."
Right, at this time.
So, like, right now, but if you get that variance, you will have...
Yes and no. If I get the variance, I would like to at some point, but I also need to make a move to put it out.
Okay.
So, it's not a...I mean, ultimately, I think it would also had here, those are all make the land more, you know, collectively if there's a push down there.
Okay.
It's not a...it's not supposed to happen, I'm not gonna come messing the nest with that in time soon.
I just bring it up because in the review that I do would be largely based on the way that the site would drain, so when people come in and they shake the land and they improve it and they do something that it can cause drainage issues, that's something that's changing you, but in a future senittal that you would put in the county reflective of how you find out changing the impervious nature of the underground property.
Understood.
Can you kind of walk us through, I know that this is gonna be something that a lot of folks will want to speak to and address. Can you kind of describe the operation, if this works and goes through, what would an average day, Monday through Friday, or a weekend as well, like, for the surrounding community, what would an average day look like and sound like on this property? Are there gonna be, you know, trucks showing up at, you know, three AM? Is there gonna be...I think you said that you were actually producing product on the site as well?
So, it would be recycling the material, wood chips, trees, you know, fallen leaves, acres, so nothing would be being delivered during off-hours.
Okay.
At most, during the off-season, so April through June, July, you know, landscaping person wanting to pick up earlier, potentially have loading at seven AM, but nothing, nothing crazy.
But you will be running a chipper or shredder on your...
It would be a tub grinder. And again, that would be during normal business hour, operation. Hopefully, you know, Monday through... And it wouldn't be every day, you typically want a stockpile of that material, so that when you're running it, you're being effective at earning fuel for minimal return. So, not every day that you'd be...
And then I believe that you had indicated that you would be having...that you would be proposing visual buffers for the property?
Correct.
Okay.
Again, trying to clean up what's by the street right now, you know, already, like I said, cleaning up the garbage, but making it more visually appealing with nicer looking trees, bushes, not just overgrown and invasive.
Sure, okay. So, yeah, those are just some questions that I know...those are the types of questions that would be of impact to the surrounding neighborhood? And then again, if you were to get a use variance, we would communicate after that point about, you know, the design, if we'd actually be putting on the site, and to make sure that it didn't create drainage issues for your folks yourself and for the downstream folks.
Yeah.
That's all I have at this time.
Maybe David, one other thing before we go. He mentioned earlier that he...they're filling on site, did that give you pause for pause from a stormwater perspective?
Yeah, that's good, but can you kind of walk me through a bit what...what are you currently doing?
Right now, the northeast corner of the property that runs up to the neighbor's property, just putting in a parking pad there, and then essentially the rest of it's just been mowing and cutting down.
So, what is the current...what is the current drainage there at that portion where you're putting the parking pad in? Is there a culvert, is there a swale there?
There is a...I mean, I'm behind, definitely behind the offset by twenty, twenty to thirty feet. There is a version of a swale by the road, road was built up higher than the property, all the properties, which obviously makes sense, but it's not playing out, so I understand that. The...the permit for the driveway was put in and a culvert pipe was put in under the driveway, larger diameter, at least three...
Oh, and you said that was permitted, the driveway, the culvert, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I applied for it a few months ago and went back in, tried getting a receipt, and I just gave them another check, so I have the first check, so...
Yeah.
I definitely making sure I actually met Mike, I can't remember the gentleman's name, out there to discuss the placement of and size and diameter that would handle it.
I would say be cautious with any other work that you're doing that you're not putting, you know, you're not putting material down somewhere that's impacting drainage. We've had some pretty significant rain events over the last few weeks, so we've been out there doing it, and you start to notice, you know, staining water, ponding water, you know, something you want to be looking out for.
Right, understood.
Yep.
So, on your application, you said there's gonna be employees out there. What is the plan for restroom facilities, that kind of stuff, any kind of wastewater generation, where is that?
So, as of right now, don't know what the plan is yet, trying to figure out what I would do once I get approval.
Okay.
Ultimately, if it requires putting in a well and a building of some sort, fine, not continuously between, I guess, either the attorney or whatever department to speak with to make it approved.
Well, that would be my...I went to help department.
Okay.
So, we have jurisdiction over septic systems and all that, so if you're gonna do a septic system, you need to get soil borings, and because this is non-residential, it's gonna have to go through the Indiana Department of Health for specing. And so, the soil borings, we get sent to the state, state would have us do an onsite, we would go out and do the onsite for the state, we would send them our findings, they would give you specs, and then on what would have to go there in terms of the design, or if a septic could go there. And it would tell you like the size of the system, does it need drainage, where does... how deep is the drainage, drainage has to flow by gravity, outlet daylight on this property, I don't know if that's doable. You know, so that would all have to go through the state for specing, and then depending on the size of the system, either the state or us here locally would do the review of the site plan, and then we would issue a permit locally and we would do an inspection on the system. So, if you're gonna have a bathroom there with sink, and so people can wash up, your employees, and use the restroom, that's gonna have to go into a septic system. The state does now allow for, if you couldn't get a field in, the state does allow for permanent holding tanks on commercial and residential now. You still have to go through the state to get approval for that, but...and there's some other things that go along with that, you have to have a contract with a licensed wastewater hauler that has to be on file with us, and every time you have the tank pumped, you have to submit those pumping receipts to the health department for the life of you using that holding tank. Yeah, so that's a potential option, or porta-johns are always an option, there's not really a lot of regulation on porta-johns, it's just they can't create a public health issue, so you...they can't get dumped over, like, if a storm blows through and everything, you gotta maintain them and stuff like that, so... I guess, once you kind of get an idea, you know, come see me.
Would it be possible to get like your contact info?
Yeah, I can get it together.
Yeah.
And then, you know, just contact me and I can kind of walk you through the process once you, you know, if you do get the approval, or if you decide, hey, I wanna try to do a septic or something, I can kind of walk you through that process.
No, absolutely, we understand.
And point you in the right direction, but there would have to be some kind of wastewater disposal on the property if you're gonna have a restroom and stuff.
Right, and I pardon my ignorance in this, but I don't know, you know, does the horse come before the car or the car before the horse, like, what do I have to do first or second? So, trying to get all of this in place, I don't know if I need to get the variance first, or if I need to have all the answers first, so I apologize for not...
Well, you would...the VCA is gonna ask you those questions, and you're gonna make a commitment to those.
Okay.
So, in order, before you appear to be VCA, my suggestion to you is to have those answers.
Okay.
Does that mean you got ten thousand, thousands of dollars in care? They might be satisfied with you making that commitment, which will be part of that approval if they are so inclined to give it to you.
Okay.
But you've got to be prepared for it, because that's a business decision you're gonna have to make.
Okay.
Be aware as well, with Dan referring to your septic system, that especially if I'm given the nature of what you're doing, that area, the area where the system would go in a certain radius around it would be off limits to doing things like, you know, you won't be able to stockpile thousands of...
Oh, no. Whatever that would be would...I don't know if any of the drawings were given to you guys, but that would be in one of the green areas, you know, specifically grassed over.
So, just so you're...so, the area where if you're gonna get a field in there, it has to be untouched natural soil, you can't fill it in, you can't disturb it, you know, it's gotta be untouched, I hear they've proposed like retention areas on here, you have to be a certain set distance away from those with the septic code.
Right.
You gotta be ten feet from structures, that includes parking areas, you gotta be five feet from property lines, fifty feet from wells, all that, so all that separation distances, well, it'd be a hundred feet from wells for you because it's non-residential.
Okay.
So, you know, wherever your well goes, a hundred feet away from that is where your field will be, it has to be outside of that hundred-foot radius, so these are things to like kind of start thinking about, and I'll give you my contact info like when we're done here, and I will...and if you wanna set an appointment, come in and kind of talk to me, I can kind of sit down and kind of go over all this with you, you know, in my office downstairs, so...
All right, you'd probably want to actually even like around this site, like close off the area, because you're gonna have, you know, trucks showing up to deliver things, and there's nothing that they love more than to accidentally dump something where it shouldn't go.
Right.
Completely understand what you're saying.
Very good.
Anything else, Dan? That's all I have, right, Kevin?
Yeah, let me just begin with, do you live proximate to this parcel, or...
No, I live in Belgrade.
Okay, so, do you have a relative or somebody that lives around here, and why this piece of land?
This land was originally purchased by a relative for a different use, and then they went in a different direction with it, so it's in a good location for it, it's not surrounded by neighborhoods, it's surrounded by other businesses doing similar work. It's a decent size.
What I'm gonna suggest is you identify those other businesses that you say are similar for the trust and the board, VCA, as Mike has said, that you're here just to get an understanding of what that board may ask you, what their desires are, and what our concerns are from the technical standpoint, starting off with the septic field, considering how wet it is in this area, I suspect that you're going to have to add some surface drainage that requires a gravity outflow, fall. That's gonna need to be designed, and I'm not too optimistic that that...
That's why I brought up the holding tank option, because kind of knowing that area, I mean, he can get soil borings, and he can see if there's somewhere on the property to do it.
Right.
But if there's not, he might have to fall back and do the permanent holding tank option where he just pumps it out indefinitely.
And that a pump and haul will be up to the state, it's discouraged, it's, I'm not too optimistic, but that's...
Well, it's allowed now, it was passed out, so...but he would still have to get approval through the state, he would have to get an approval letter through them that says, yeah, you can do a holding tank here, and this is the criteria, they have to for that holding tank.
You could also do chemical toilets.
Yeah, like porta-johns, yeah.
Temporary, with permission of the state and of course with the VCA. Going back to the issue of the ground itself, I would suggest that you need some kind of development plan to come back to the, particularly this one, because it should include these soils, any potential wetlands, that information, as well as your access. But, as Mike said, hold off until you see VCA, so you know what they're going to say before you start making large investment. Hopefully, you haven't done so much excavation that you caused problems for your plan, particularly with the septic field. Access is another thing, you're gonna have to talk to Mr. Bautch about your access to the county highway and the design for that. It seems to me it's relatively flat here, and trying to figure out how you...are you gonna have customers come to the site?
I mean, yes, that would be the goal, would be landscapers or owners coming to the site.
You're not a landscaper yourself.
No.
This is to supply materials.
Correct.
To landscapers.
So, if I might...
Sure.
Not just landscape companies, but me as Joe Q citizen could come and buy materials.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Because we need to gauge how many visitors are coming to the site, how it's impacting the surrounding neighborhood as well. Are you gonna have lights out here?
I'm gonna...
Lighting? Security lighting?
Again, if it was required, sure.
Well, our concern more is a nuisance to the neighborhood.
Okay.
Fugitive lighting, I think, most people with businesses want some kind of security lighting for protection hours of business or something that VCA will bring up also. Are you gonna have limitations? Are you planning on having signage on the site?
Not initially, no.
Ever?
Eventually, yes.
Then that's something that you'll be discussing with VCA, and probably have requirements for certain variances. I think that would be the first type of...
Thank you, Kevin.
Mark?
Yeah, follow from what Kevin was saying for access from the county highway, I used to be applying for your permit back in April, that was under a residential application, so if it's gonna be commercially used, that'd require a new driveway permit meeting current commercial standards.
Okay.
You said you upsized the culvert that was going under? You showed the twelve inch on your permit application, what did you install?
Sixteen, I believe.
All right, fifteen or eighteen?
Fifteen.
Okay.
Yeah, fifteen or eighteen, then.
Okay.
If I may, what material could you use?
Corrugated.
Okay.
Metal or plastic? Metal.
If you're going to have heavy truck soil, that you might wanna upgrade to ductile iron or concrete.
Okay.
Because corrugated, whether it's plastic or steel.
Okay.
Deforms, if not crushes, and it's...
Okay.
Because you're gonna be possibly looking at some heavier weight, particularly, I assume you're gonna have also landscaping stone, rubble, rock available?
I don't really want to get into block or like pavers or anything of that nature, just stone, paper-based decorative, you know, river rock, pebbles, things like that, and sand, so really don't want to deal with palate material.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, you'd have to have adequate cover on top of it if you were gonna use CMT, but it's a pretty shallow area as far as that swell goes, I imagine.
Isn't very shallow, so...
Right, so I'd agree with Mr. Breitsky that most likely reinforced concrete pipe would be your best option.
Obviously, yes, okay.
Just kind of going through your application, this is something I'm curious, and the question was can a property be reasonably used for any purpose permitted in the zoning district without the use of variance? You said no. Can you tell me why it couldn't be used as a residential property?
Based off what has been said earlier in this meeting and the potential inability for the septic to go in, seems like it would be a lot harder to turn it into residential based on that. Nothing else around it is residential or has been residential for the entire duration of its, I guess, documented existence. There are no other homes on this side, and with any potential of a...I know it's been shot down, but any potential of a data center or something of that nature going in across the...the cross the golf course needs to be, it seems like it's already shot down the desire to go, you know, as Nebraska didn't work out, residential, so it doesn't seem like this would be, you know, transformed into any residential in time soon, if at all. So, to me, this would be putting in something else that matches well, other establishments that have, you know, went up, including the animal hospital on ten fifty, and then obviously parked it down, there's just more commercial going front or west. So, obviously, I'm not gonna say it could never be residential, but it has been turned residential, it has, it obviously is really residential.
Would the se...is the septic prohibitive for residential in the same way that prohibited for commercial?
So, yeah, I mean, if there's a shallow water table there, and he has nowhere to get a perimeter drain outlet by gravity and out...and flow to daylight, then we're not gonna give him a permit, because the code says, because there's a shallow water table, you need a drain and it has to flow by gravity and outlet to daylight.
Right.
So, if he can't physically get a drain outlet, then we would say that site is unsuitable for a septic system.
Right, and that's the same for commercial or residential, though?
Yes, but because a couple of years ago, the state allows for permanent holding tanks on residential and commercial now, that gives them potential, another option, because you don't need drainage for a holding tank.
Same for both, commercial and...
Commercial and residential.
It's not prohibitive from that standpoint to do residential.
Right, but who wants to pump out a tank for the entire...that's living in a house twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year and have to pump a tank out like three times a week at the cost, it's gonna be cost prohibitive.
More for residential?
What do you mean, proportionally using more?
What, the pumping?
So, the forcing, yeah.
It would be us, so he would have to provide pumping receipts every time it's pumped, and if we check, when we check, and my goal is to have operating permits for all these permanent holding tanks where they have to renew it every so many years, and I just don't have that in place yet, but I do have it, I've started working on that, but it would be something that would have to be renewed every year, and if they're not submitting the pumping receipts as part of that, or even if I don't have the operating permit, if they're not submitting pumping receipts, that's considered a violation, and so we would send them a complaint letter, they would have to provide us with pumping, and if they're not pumping, we would have them vacate the property essentially, we would do like a vacate order, a health officer's order, until they do that, so...
Hey, Mark?
Yeah.
Going back to your line of questioning, you know, I'm looking at chapter two of the UDO for our permitted uses, and it's not just housing, it's a full multitude of agricultural uses that are also permitted.
Absolutely.
To answer your question, yeah, maybe it's not suitable for a house for maybe those reasons, but it's still suitable for all these agricultural purposes.
Right.
Irrespective of the septic tank.
Where is this site in proximity, you mentioned DeBroski, where in proximity, or how close is this site to directly itself?
Yes, sir.
You said that that area had, with the data center being shut down, it has no meanings towards residential usage?
Well, it, with the data center in mind, it didn't.
Okay, I just wanted to point out, I don't know if this is relevant to the discussion or not, but the, myself and another engineer in the county got invited to, I don't know the date yet, but there is a pre-application meeting going on with the county of Chesterton that the county has been invited to for a very substantial residential subdivision being built.
being built on the DeBraskey course. Very substantial. So again, I haven't seen it yet, but we were, the town of Chesapeake reached out to say that there was an applicant coming in for a very substantial submitter for that area, and it's going to be residential subdivision, is what's currently being proposed.
About five hundred acres is what it would have.
Very substantial.
I would then say that I am still, this property is at the very end of Mineral Springs Road, so it's still a quarter mile from the DeBraskey entrance, so it's not close from a sound testable level, but from a convenience of landscape material and beautification of the, you know, development, you know, homeowners doing work, you know, obviously homes get built, they have a budget, and then over time they drastically improve, adding landscaping and increasing home value. I think the benefits of convenience to go pick it up and do that weekend project or have it delivered and do that weekend project would create greater benefit for the community than nothing being on land and, you know, lasting, you know, for homeowners.
And then again, I only brought it up.
Oh, I appreciate it.
That, you know, hey, you know, there's nothing there, this is the thing that they're going there, but like there are plans, there are.
There are, okay, I think it didn't go that there are potential future plans, nothing is done for a handful of years on that site.
Well, it might work well to have that to support any, anything going on in the neighborhood. You might be asked, why this site, so why not get a commercial site in that area if that's where you're interested in, why this one? This is the questions that are going to be coming up.
And again, I, are you looking for any, sir, or just?
I'm thinking.
No, I'm just, okay.
I mean, you're probably gonna be asking.
Okay.
You said that you use some value of the area, Jason, the property included, the variance will not be affected in a substantially adverse manner because, and one of the things, you said the traffic will be managed to avoid impact on neighboring residential parcels. What's the, what's the traffic that you're managing and how are you going to be managing?
I mean, right now, the, there are two roads that, Mineral Springs had dead ends not into the property, but a corner of the property. There's already a stop sign there. It's a not heavily traveled area, but it's a main road to connect 149 essentially to 49. So in terms of vehicle traffic and whatnot, putting in any required entrance exit, you know, going through and talking to and saying, okay, if I have to put in a second one entrance or anything of that nature, I would do that, but cleaning up the bushes, making it high usability to people to obviously safely enter into would be, you know, top priority.
Yeah, and then on the commercial drive is gonna affect having 24 foot is the minimum width for a commercial drive.
Okay.
So that's too late to traffic, they're going in and going out.
That's all I had.
Yeah.
Hey, Rich, do you have any?
I shared some pictures with. Yeah, thank you. I guess I have one more question about containment of materials, since you're spottiling loose materials, are you gonna have concrete bins or some kind of hencing, distort your materials?
So the.
What design are you looking at?
The holding areas would be, the goal would be to do concrete bins, concrete two by two by six, concrete blocks, creating storage bins, again, in the front northeast corner of the property so people can see it on the street. Back part of the property would be where the recycling unit actually take place with the grinder, and that would be more of a open concept so that the material is able to be properly stored and flipped, you know, during the course of the year to begin a product as desired for homeowners and business owners. So the back of the property would be a, you know, larger piles, not necessarily high but longer, and then the front would be storage bins with separate locks.
And this is really more for Rich with these MS4 with concrete washout, if you're constructing materials and you're gonna have concrete trucks there.
No, it would be natural trucks, it would be.
No, no, not for your purpose of business, but for construction of the bins themselves.
Those bin blocks are precasted.
Well, if you use a block, I heard kind of both, you gotta decide what you're gonna do.
No, use concrete block, two by two by six concrete block.
Okay, you will use those.
Yes.
No more?
They have a keyway in, sorry, for a lot of things.
So again, that would be, you know, ideally, how high would I be required to put it? Would, you know, is preferred, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to do anything wrong, I'm trying to make sure that what I'm putting in is, hey, this is more visually appealing than not, it is cleaning the land, it's providing benefits, you know, so if it's, hey, you need to go too high, all right, maybe two, please don't bring it too high.
And this is up view, but a lot of times what we do is puttings under those walls, and there again, there's concrete, but it's just something to think about. We're, we're just bringing up questions that somebody else may bring up, they just need to be aware of.
Understood, and I mean, I'm not taught to think about many passing puttings in. I know typically if you go to any of the strip malls during the winter, you're using those same blocks, you know, asphalt or concrete to use to sort their salt in. So I think the same, same concept as those mobile sites, if you will, I mean, it's the same block, it's the same design, just put on the ground level, so no different than also.
Those are mostly temporary, and you're doing something that I think they're gonna be there for a longer period of time.
I mean, that is also the standard for the industry of using those blocks.
Right.
So if it was, hey, you need to put in a, you know, more, like you said, a keyway and, you know, you believe that lock would gather.
Here again, just something to think about.
Understood.
We don't need answers yet.
Okay, Ken?
Yep.
Let me finish a note, I got a few things. So appearance today is just informal review, preparing for when you go in front of the VCA. After listening to the questions asked and the responses, I think watching the VCA, I think you better be prepared for your presentation to address some of the following issues. One is certainly the sanitary and the water issue, whether or not you're gonna use temporary holding tanks of any type. Of course, that would be subject in terms of reviews of any agency. Certainly stormwater is gonna come up, this is all low volume area, I think, pretty flat out here, so they're gonna be concerned about the runoff of the water and maintaining of the runoff. Talk about that you're gonna be a business for landscapers to come get multiple materials as well as individuals such as the regular citizen to come and go and get this, so traffic is certainly gonna be a concern and the question asked will be easy to get. I think pollution and noise, I think you're gonna have to address those as well. You say you're running a chipping, a branding business, especially when you're dealing with dry materials, you're gonna be putting a lot of dust up in the air and things like that, plus the noise of those operations, I think you need to make sure to address those. Hours of operation, that's a real big one that I always see VCA get into because you gotta be compatible with your surrounding neighbors. Which does bring up compatibility with the surrounding properties. Now, fortunate for you, two properties immediately to your west and one to the south, there are no houses there, there's parcels, I think, with small structures. That's correct, and the properties to be, probably to the north is far field before you even get to DeBraskey, probably to the northwest is wooded area that from my understanding cannot be built on, or at least it's not a septic. Some of the things to think in your presentation to address are gonna be concerned about compatibility with surrounding properties. This then leads to a buffer, not only for site, but for sound, because I think you're gonna be a noise generator, the tippers and grinders going on there. Now, being this is gonna be a commercial enterprise on a rural residential, I don't think that concludes you from turning in site development plan before you get your final approvals. So as David suggested, you would have to address things such as stormwater, address what the county highway engineer says as far as driveways and things like that, those will have to be addressed in a formal site development plan, provided that you get the VCA approval. So again, no need to spend money on engineering at this time, that would probably be the point. Then lastly, you're talking, you know, it's kinda interesting, you're gonna do all this stuff, there's no cover for the employees or any climate weather or anything, I would think that you're gonna be wanting to put structures on there, is that correct? I mean, there's also the leather landscapers at work. Sure. Work. Okay. I just thinking you had employees, you always gotta have. No, understood, I mean, fully understand, right now, there's also, till it gets going, there would be employees, which would be. But eventually, a structure is in your plans. Yes. And at which time, I remind you that we don't allow on our zone property structures without a residential on it, so you'd be facing other variances when it's that time. So from my understanding, if this continues, rather than continuously applying for a variant, I was told I could then apply for permanent reclassification of, you mean re-sole? Yeah, reclassification of the zone. Yeah, that's an option. So I was told I should seek this out first to see if it would be approval, and then if it is deemed to be within tolerance over time and, you know, worth continuing doing, then seek that out. Right, that is an option, it's one of two options, I'm just preparing you, either one, you gotta get the proper zoning, or two, you gotta get variance to build the structures. Okay. Okay. That's all I have. Any questions for us? Other than getting, at least your contact info, is there anybody else that feels that I should sit down and we have to discuss anything in particular to better understand you? From their perspective?
No.
Once you have a use, but once you have a use variant out there, at that point, you would probably start making that development plan with, with firm, and then typically what we advise is that you come to the county building with your surveyor or engineer, and we have what's called a pre-application meeting where we go through in more detail the specifics of, you know, here's our tech list, here's the information I'll need to provide. So I would say that you wouldn't need to meet with me until that point, at one, you've used variant, and then you've also established a relationship with, you know, a local professional that could put together, a professional that's familiar with the type of documentation and drawing that would be submitted in support of your application.
All right, so our comments for you to take and use of your discretion. Discretion, but we're trying to point you to a successful VCA, so I think you're prepared to that, you are preparing before the VCA on September 17th, 5:30 here in the same chambers. If you have no question, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next case is UV 2025-63, King Cruz, Soriano, 1454 Smoke Road, Valparaiso, Indiana, 46385 in Center Township. Current zoning is R1, low density single family residential district, acreage is .57 acres. Today, we're having a formal review of a lot of the operation of a landscape business, including the storage of equipment and materials, as well as a lot of employees that report to the site. If I might say, the reason you're here is I think code enforcement came and visited you.
Yes.
And told you I had to come in for a use variant, so just a little more than just that. So you heard what's going on in the other one, there's a lot of similarities here, so we'll let you explain, introduce yourself a bit, what are you gonna do?
Uh, King Cruz, Soriano, and I'm here to see if I'm allowed to operate my business from Smoke Road, 1454, and I know that there are materials, but we not really store any materials, I think just a typo.
So you're doing most of the equipment and.
Yes.
Material you use personally for your business?
Uh, yeah, but not with.
Tell us more about your business, how many employees and how many vehicles are these?
So we have three employees, so three trucks.
Three?
Yes.
Okay.
And we do mostly mowing, so the equipment would be mowers. We only work Monday to Friday, and from Monday to Friday, we leave the mowers on the trailers, so that way there's no noise. So we get there in the morning, we just parker, personal car, get on the trucks and leave to the site.
How many personal cars would you say maximum, including your?
Four, four of mine.
So total of four cars on the property, is?
Plus the three, yes.
And I'm sorry, introduce yourselves.
Jessica Reesar, co-owner of the Land Management.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Anything else about business, what kind of hours of operation Monday to Friday?
Uh, we'll be, we usually start at 1:30 to 5:00, or 3:00 to 5:00, you know, Monday to Friday.
And what do you do during the winter, do you, you're vertical, snow plowing or?
Uh, we offer, yeah, we offer snow plowing, but lately it's been dead, so there's barely any movement in there.
Any material you store, fuels or anything else you store?
No, 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 don't be, don't be that.
So to recap, it's just simply mowers on trailers and you have trucks?
Yes.
And you're simply moving those around and that's just the place to record and start?
Yes.
If your business grows, are you thinking of going to other landings for your operation? Are you planning on staying in the same site?
Uh, I guess in the future, if we grow, we will need.
More space?
More space, for a few years, I think you're fine. Give me a lot.
I remember, based on the code enforcement officer, you do have a sign currently that identifies you as a business?
Yes, we put a sign, but we took it down, it's down right now.
Very good. Last question, escapes me right now. Oh, you have barns and everything, you store things inside?
It's a garage in there.
How big is that facility?
Uh, I think 24 by 22.
You can hold all your mowers and all that?
Yeah, we only have mowers, not me.
Well, that's huge, I've heard, anything else you wanna add about your business?
No, yeah.
David?
Um, yes, so Mike kinda asked the first question I always ask when folks in these situations, so I guess you got a visit from code enforcement. Do we know, do we have an understanding of what led to that? Was the, I don't know if the, did this county stumble across it? Was it a noise complaint that came in? Was it a visual, was it an eyesore complaint? Was it somebody who said, hey, I had to get a permit for my business and that guy didn't, so I'm gonna, did somebody rack you up for that reason, or is there a lighting issue?
Well, I'm familiar with that because it came across my desk before it went to put off, so.
Okay.
It was a resident noticing the sign.
Okay.
That's a residence and residential, maybe.
Okay, I'd like to get a, I'd like to get a feel for what precipitated the calls we can see, you know, are you guys being noisy at 4:00 AM or is it, you know, the truck, the headlights are going into people's windows at weird hours, that's what we're trying to get into a point here. So you are, how long have you been operating the, operating for off of this property?
Uh, we moved last month, so a month and a half or so.
It didn't take long?
Yeah, well, nine weeks with the sign last week or two weeks ago.
Oh, okay, so is that, so prior, but prior to the sign, how long have you been doing what you're doing now?
I think a month, a month, virtually, yeah.
Yeah, I've seen this movie before, we must had an identical meeting, we just had an identical hearing into the previous case. So we talked about that, can you kind of walk us through for what you're doing? If I live, if I'm this person to the south of you, what's my experience? what's my experience like living next to Jesus's landscaping business? Am I, am I seeing, am I hearing a bunch of noise, and weird hours of the day? Would, would I even know that you're doing it? What, what do you think on that?
I don't believe so, 'cause, like you say, we just get in the morning, our, our personal cars, get the trucks, and get to the site. There's no movement really.
So customers aren't coming to you, you're always going to your customer, okay? Um, did you change anything on the property, uh, when did you purchase the property?
End of May.
End of May, okay. Did you change anything on the site regarding, and did you add any impervious cover to the property to support this business, or did you just buy it and start selling? Did you have to, did you widen the driveway, did you put in a structure?
No, nothing, nothing.
Nothing like that? Just as it was?
Yeah.
Okay, do you have any, if this were to go through, would you have any plans of adding any impervious cover? Any expanded driveway, bigger parking area, structure?
Uh, no, no, I don't think we will ever need more space than what we now.
Okay. Um, I will, that's all for now, I might wanna jump back in later, depending on as, as the conversation progresses, but again, you heard what I, um, the previous case, a lot of the things that we would be looking at. It looks like if this were to go through, you probably would not be applying for a development plan, because you're not looking to change anything about the site, to make it workable for you. It sounds like this is going to mostly be a impact to the public, uh, case, rather than a, you know, I need to change this property to support this plan, as the case, so. My role in this case will be, um, reduced from the prior one. But that's all I have at this time.
Dan?
So the only structure on there is a garage, right now? There's no, 'cause it used to be residential, right? Or it's residential, so?
They used to have a?
Is there a house there, or was there a house?
Tr trailers?
There used to be a trailer on the side.
Okay, but someone lived in that?
Correct.
Trailer, okay.
It's been living for five years.
Um, but that's not, that's no longer there?
No.
No.
Okay. Do we know when that was torn down, did they properly abandon the existing septic system? 'Cause I'm assuming it had a septic system, um, on the property, since that area's not on sewer. Uh, do we have any indication if that's been?
We think there's a well.
Well, there, there should be a well.
Yeah, but.
If it was, if it was a residential house, it would have a well, and then it would have a septic system. And generally, if that residence is no longer there, um, they're supposed to properly abandon the septic system. So what that entails is, the septic tank should have been pumped out by a licensed wastewater hauler, and, um, and then that tank gets crushed and filled in and backfilled over the top of it. Because, um, if that hasn't been done, it's a potential environmental hazard, 'cause one of the, one day, the sewage could start leaking out of that septic tank. And the other thing is someone could be on the property, and if that concrete tank, 'cause I'm assuming it's a concrete tank, 'cause they didn't do plastic tanks, um, and I don't have anything on record with that property having a newer septic system, that tank could collapse in, and if someone's out there walking around, they could fall into that septic tank. So, um, it's a safety and an environmental, so, um, I would see if you can find that out, if you can't?
How do we find that information, or who will that happen?
I mean, you would have to talk to, I mean, you could maybe ask who you bought it from, um, you know, and see if they properly abandoned it, um, you might have to poke around and see if you can locate the tank and be kind of near where the structure is. I would just, if you can't find it, I would just be aware that it's there.
Okay.
Because if you see, like, sewage coming up one day, or, um, you notice, like, a sinkhole in the yard, and you're like, what is that? That was probably what a septic tank is, and I would be very careful about, you know, going around there. I don't know how old it is, and, you know, they do eventually degrade and give way, and, you know, it, it is an issue. Um, the other thing, uh, so, you guys are just reporting to the site, and then you're leaving?
Yeah, I'm like that.
There's, so, there's no need for restroom facilities, or sinks, or anything there? You're just showing up, getting new stuff, and leaving?
Okay.
Um, and then the other thing is, are you doing any kind of maintenance on your mowers and stuff there? Like changing the oil and all that?
Uh, no, we used to take it to the shops, we don't want.
Okay, you take it to shops, you take it off-site and, and change the oil and stuff, 'cause I?
No, they had to have.
You're doing maintenance on them, and like, you're changing oil, you know, making sure the oil doesn't get spilled and all that, 'cause then that would just, like, hazard a spill.
It's okay.
But, uh, yeah, I mean, if, if you're not having a need for wastewater, you don't have sinks, or hand washing, or bathroom, or anything there, then, then, that's pretty much all I have, I understand, Kevin.
So along the same lines, you're questioning, you're, you're taking your equipment to be serviced by somebody else? You're contracting that up, so you're not, uh, holding, uh, liquids?
Oil.
Oils, gasoline on your site?
The only thing the weed mine has is like the small quarts, but it's usually on the trucks for, to make oil, I mean, the gas, but oil, but that's a small quartz, it's not like a big amount.
Right. Yeah, and typically, that's what a lot of homeowners do too, with having within their vehicles or within the garage. But more important is that you're, you're not storing, uh, large volumes of liquids on the site? Or any petrochemicals, uh, do you do any spraying?
No, we do not over spray.
So you're not doing herbicide or insecticide sprays, so, okay. Um, and what's a little bit, what's different than the previous case is you're not having customers come to site?
No.
So, I gotta ask, what was the point of having a sign up? Was it just for?
For business, like advertising, fair things, we don't have to have it.
Just the problem with having a sign up is kind of an invitation for people to stop and check out the business, and make their purchases or whatever, um. I can't, I don't have anything else.
Thank you, Martin.
Um, so, I did see that, you said that this should not reasonably be used as currently zoned. Why can't this be used as a residential property?
That was a misunderstanding, and I'm part of the understanding question.
Okay.
But it clearly can be used as residential.
Um, to follow up on that septic item, I see that it was, yeah, was the trailer had like a built-on attachment to a previous thing in the twenty nineteen Google Street view. Um, if you're trying to find the septic, you'll see where the toilet stubbed through that concrete pad. Well, that, that's one way you can kind of track it down.
And generally, they were like ten feet off the foundation, or probably off that pad, that septic. So it could be, but generally it's ten feet, so.
Looks like you have an existing gravel drive, uh, if this, if you don't have in-and-out vehicles, everyone pretty much arrives on to this location at the same time and leaves at the same time?
Yeah, pretty much, yes.
I wouldn't see any concerns then with the need to widen your driveway at all. Um, I'm not, not sure at this time, but, uh, it seems that they'd be okay, I have no other comments, that's it.
Thank you, Martin. Rich, any? Okay. So, you're gonna be appearing also the night, the seventeenth of August? The seventh of the BCA, like the case before you? And I heard what you said before, be prepared. I saw, I looked in your file while everyone was talking, you did address a lot of questions such as hours of operation, and equipment, and things like that, so be prepared. When you sit before them, explain your businesses entirely, give them a good understanding. I see according to a deed record, you did, you just recently became owners of the property. Congratulations. So, um, the property is legal non-conforming simply because it doesn't have a residential structure on it, and you have those accessory structures, however, I think it still remains in that stead, so a decision by the BCA is the appropriate, and things. Uh, but if you decide to do something else with it, in future, changing structures, adding structures, that's another conversation we'll have to have, so just so you know.
Okay.
But I think the questions, uh, you pretty much answered all of them in your, um, subnote.
Okay.
So I would recommend to you, just making sure you have a presentation where you're stating all that stuff, kind of get ahead of it, earn, let them get a good understanding of what you're trying to do here.
So, do I have to find out about this any, or the septic tank?
Yeah, already do enough research, if there are quizzes, they're gonna ask you, you may have options you're gonna commit to, but they'll ask for commitment.
I do have one more question. So, are you, are you guys intending to still use the well? Like, are you gonna put, like, a, a faucet up there, like to hook a hose to, or anything? Uh, to like, to hose things off? If, 'cause if the well isn't going to be used, you should also properly abandon that well. Because that well is a direct access to the aquifer, so everyone around there is tacked into that aquifer to get their drinking water, and if that pipe is just there, and it gets damaged, and anything kind of spills near it, or anything, or gets in there, it's potentially contaminating everyone's well water. So if you don't have plans on using the well, I would get with a well company, a licensed well company, and have them properly abandon it. Um, if you're gonna put, like, in, like, a, you know, like a little?
That's too much.
A spigot or something to have water there to, like, you know, hose off equipment or something, then, you know, that's fine, but if you're not gonna use the well, that would be another recommendation, is to have that well properly abandoned.
We might be, in terms of, you know?
Right, yeah, so, I mean, you could look into that, that's fine, I mean, it needs to have power, um, you know, 'cause there's a pump in that well and everything, so I don't know if there's still power in the property.
Yeah, the local.
The structure was torn down, but, um, if you're gonna do that, that's fine, but if you're not gonna do anything with that well, I would recommend that it be properly abandoned.
This is just my suggestion, is that you visit with the health department. It seems like this property could potentially be a residential site again someday, but you need to find out what it's gonna take to get a septic field, because now, it's virtually been abandoned, probably not acceptable by the A standard. But he can give you some direction if your long-term plan is to put a house on this sort of service of the residential property, at least you'll know ahead of time whether you've got a usable piece of land, or may even have to consider getting connection to the city of Valpo, because Sanitaris is not too far away from.
It's terribly far.
It's, it's proximate, and that's a possibility, and there again, before you commit to all these connections and stuff, you can find out what it's gonna cost to put in a septic system, or to extend Sanitaris service, or even get public water supply, as opposed to the law.
And in the short term, in answer to your question in preparation with BCA, I'd highly recommend that you would suggest meeting with Dan.
Okay.
And you can have options, because you're gonna be asked that question whenever you have employees, whether they use a toilet, so we're gonna wash it, so. So, whether you put a temporary wash station, or a retaining, or a kind of a toilet, and some whole new thing. Plus you gotta have a place for them to go inside during the night, you know, you know what I'm saying? So, if you get with Dan before the BCA, look at options, be ready, you can do one way or the other. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Any other questions? Richard, time.
From, excuse me, from an MS Board perspective, you said about equipment washoff, that probably needs to be, uh, considered in some sort of plan for, you know, to do that, to take care of that water, I don't, you know, it's, it's not just grass, there's other fluids that can be washed off, you know, from the equipment.
That'd be a good idea. Kipby Cretty, his department requires a strong water protection plan.
Well, it's definitely a problem, I mean, I don't have to do that.
Oh, the, the solution to that can be extremely simple. If, if you want, if you want water, don't let that dissuade you from having the water. It could be, it could be as simple as, yeah, with some of those plans, it can be as simple as, hey, I've, I've got a little, you know, the water, when it runs off the area, gets, you know, collected right here, instead of going into the red lights whale. It can be as simple as that.
Yep. Yeah. It is, but it's gotta be part of a plan, you know, that, uh, you have to commit to doing that.
And I guess, that was the last comment I had, thanks for reminding me, Rich. I think just like the case before you, since you're running a commercial business, we would need some kind of formal development plan, you know? And I asked me, you had to go out and get, pay, you grew up through an engineer or something, but I think you may have to put together some simple development plan, so you're gonna need to, uh, probably sort of. But we can talk about that if you, if you need to, okay?
Okay.
Very good. Any questions, any other questions for us?
No.
I wish you much luck on the seventeenth, so you'll be here on the seventeenth at five thirty.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, good luck. Anybody else have anything else you wanna bring up?